For March 17th, our mayor Peggy Thompson is out of the city and so I'm leading the meeting tonight. And Anne Sue is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Councilmember Atkinson.
Present.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weil.
Here.
And Mayor Thompson. The next item is Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar items are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the Consent Calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the City Council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the Consent Calendar.
From the City Council, any items?
And like four, four and four six.
Wait, four, four and four, six you said? Okay, others?
I just thought maybe the staff could clear up four, seven a little bit because it seems like it's almost a call for action although I know at this point it's advisory information.
And members of the public, any items? Okay, back to four, four, Marge.
I'd just like to commend the work project. It's a great job that I very well laid out and looking forward to the expansion of that garden over at Memorial. A lot of people have worked on it and worked very hard and think it's a great project, so, great.
Second that.
I had a question about the garden. Is there anything being done regarding water this year? I know you're expanding the garden in a drought, so is there going to be any...
Sure, go ahead, thank you Alexa.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Alexa Hauser. I'm the volunteer coordinator of the Edible Landscape Project in Memorial Park, which is a Friends of Albany Park project. So, the technique that we're using to develop the garden is called permaculture and one of the important tenants of permaculture is that we use as little water as possible all the time to maximize resources. So, in general, the garden is not a terribly thirsty garden, but certainly any additional plantings we're putting in at this time are drought tolerant or on that end of the scale. Thank you.
And four, six.
Yeah, I noticed that there's going to be some bull bouts. This is the last of the project that has been going on for a long time. And I don't remember how the bull bouts affect the bike lanes or not, and I was just sort of wanting a little refresher.
What was your question?
Well, there's bull bouts that are being proposed as part of that project, and I know that we're also trying to underground and then put some bike lanes in.
Right.
So, I can't quite remember how the bull bouts and bike lanes interact, whether there's...I mean, I'm sure they're going to be clear of each other, but...
Yes. And we are actually designing gutters that are 1.5 feet instead of two. That's also the city standard and the bull bouts will not interfere and the gutter will not interfere with the bike lanes. That project will be before you, pretty soon, maybe in a couple of months, because we're going to do it with the undergrounding. The project is expected to be built between 2015 and 16, so there's time for you to take a review of it.
Thank you.
A question about the financing. So, we're getting another over $500,000 from Measure B funds, and then there'll be a need for an additional $350,000 that we haven't found a source of funding.
We haven't developed...we have a preliminary engineer estimate, but we haven't actually really looked at the data. Good enough, we don't have the...with the project that went to the Traffic and Safety Commission in the last month, that we're going to develop engineer estimate and then we're going to see exactly how much money we have available from the Route 28 and how many, how much we have available from the grants and what is the funding gap that we have. There are some opportunities that are coming up for grants. One is the, it's called the Active Transportation Plan from Caltrans that combines BTA, which is the Bicycle Transportation Account, Safe First to School, and a trails fund that is basically just for rural trails or for things like the, like the Bay Trail, for instance. So, those three sources are combined and the call for projects is coming up soon. There are two types. One is the statewide and another one is the regional call for projects. So, we have two opportunities. They do want to fund projects that are big, and that's one of the problems we have because right now with $300,000 might not be very attractive. So, that's...I'm seeking grants, actually.
Okay, well, I understand. Hopefully, that grant money will come through.
I always have my high hopes.
We really appreciate your vigilance about these grants. Thank you. Okay, four, seven.
It was the Bicycle Advisory Committee. So, we're going to be voting on this later on, and this is just to give us essentially a heads up on what...okay.
Do I hear a motion then about the Consent Calendar?
I move the Consent Calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Member Atkinson and seconded by Member Moss that we approve the Consent Calendar. You want to call the roll?
Councilmember Atkinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Weil.
Yes.
Next is Presentation. Proclamation in honor of the Albany Rotary's 85th anniversary.
Our former mayor, Marge Atkinson, will be presenting the proclamation. Do we have someone from the Rotary Club here? Good. Please come to the podium for your picture.
Hi, good to see you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Pleasure to be here.
So, this is the City of Albany proclamation in honor of the Albany Rotary's 85th anniversary. Whereas the Albany Rotary Club, a member of Rotary International, was organized in March of 1929, and whereas the Albany Rotary Club has provided the citizens of the City of Albany with 85 years of continuous community service, and whereas the Albany Rotary Club has continued to exemplify the motto of Rotary International: Service Above Self. And whereas the Albany Rotary Club has sponsored or contributed to local projects for the past 85 years, including the Joe Villa, scholarships for students graduating from Albany High School, Albany Little League and Albany Berkeley Girl Softball League sponsorships, dictionaries, donations to all third grade classrooms, rebuilding together home improvements, key route beautification, Solano Avenue bench repair and painting, books donated to all AUSD school libraries, donation of park horse along the Aloney Greenway to the City of Albany, Rota Care Medical Clinic enrichment for the uninsured, Rider Coach Connection, which I have done and is a great program, Literacy Project at Golden Gate Fields, Albany Senior Citizen Center Building Fund. It's a very impressive list. Whereas the Albany Rotary Club has sponsored or contributed to international projects for the past 85 years, including Rotary International Foundation, Worldwide Eradication of Polio, Rotavision, Training Doctors to Perform Eye Surgery in Less-Developed Countries, Kenya Smiles, Bringing Dental Health to Children in Kenya, Rotoplast, Cleft Palate Surgeries in Less-Developed Countries. It's two pages.
Wow.
LN-4 Hands, Hand Prosthesis to Landmine Victims, Burkina Faso Water and Education Project in Africa, Engineers Without Borders, and Improvements to Schools in Mexico. That's very impressive. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the Albany City Council hereby congratulates the Albany Rotary Club on its 85 years and thank the Rotary for their service, both locally and globally.
Thank you very much.
Excellent job, excellent job. Thank you very much.
Well, it's my pleasure to accept it, and thank you very much. Actually, tomorrow, March 18th, is the exact 85th anniversary. We're having a little party to celebrate the event. It's going to be at Mechanics Bank at 5:30. The entire council is invited to come and indulge, a little champagne, some refreshments. So, we, thank you very much. By the way, we'll have a lot of historical materials on display, among which will be this. We'll display it prominently, very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Review of Advisory Body Work Plans. Staff recommendation that the council receive presentations regarding the 2014 work plans developed by the Community Media Access Committee, Park and Recreation Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission outlining the priority tasks for each respective group, and provide any comments or direction regarding each advisory body work plan.
Good evening, councilmembers. This evening, we have our final three advisory bodies for your review, their work plans for your review. We have CMAC, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Planning and Zoning. So, I have from the CMAC Committee Terry Lamb, the vice chair, to present the work plan.
Good evening, council. I'm Terry Lamb. I'm the vice chair of Community Media Access Committee. The chair, Jack Kenny, is out of town, and so he asked me to come and make this presentation to you. Let me tell you a little bit about the committee first. Jack is the current chair for this year. He's been a member for many years, in fact was instrumental in having this committee start in the first place, along with Naomi Lux Segal, who was one of the originators of this committee. She is the outgoing chair, the one from last year. And so, a lot of the work that was done, a lot of the success that was accomplished last year was under the direction of Naomi Segal, including the Film Festival, which was a major part of her work because she's the executive producer of that. She was one of the instigators of it, and she has been very instrumental in making that happen. It was something that was really big and successful last year, and even more so this year. It just happened a couple of weeks ago. It's not part of officially of this presentation, but the folks wanted me to tell you that it was a very, very successful event this year. Not only was the room in which all of the films were being shown over at the community center filled to capacity and standing room only, but the additional overflow room, the Edith Stone Room, was also packed with people. In fact, there were folks standing in line in the lobby waiting for others to get up and go to the bathroom so they could rush in and take their seat. It was very, very successful event, and in fact, we haven't got this on our list yet, but one of the things that we're thinking about is finding a way to expand it even more for next year and finding a larger venue for showing. Anyway, Film Festival is a very big part of what the work of the committee has been. Let me say a few things. We've got, we've got the, on the projection up here, our presentation, the first, I'll just going to, it's a long one, so I'm just going to quickly hit on some of the things that I think are important. Film Festival I mentioned, and all of the broadcasting that's been done, not only in this room for your meetings, for the school board meetings, for various kinds of town hall meetings, candidates events, lots of things that happened in this building and happened over in the community center are now available to be viewed online on KALB. And a lot of that has to do with the work of Jeremy Allen, who is, going a little farther down on the list, you'll see it in a second. He's the, in this past year, he has become the full-time staff member devoted to these activities, to managing KALB and assisting our committee to do our work. And so, a lot of this is credit to Jeremy and his work and the people that work with him in the, in the volunteer group that surround him, as well as some of the other staff members. I'll mention quickly, student broadcasts. I mentioned this because, in fact, my position on CMAC is as a representative of the school board. There are five members on the committee, one appointed by each of you folks, and then there are two other members, an adult member and a student member appointed by the school district. In times of past, we've had a student representative, never an adult representative, but that was the position that interested me because I really want to create opportunities, more opportunities, for students to do creative work, make creative films. They're doing a fabulous job in terms of recording events. They record sporting events and music events for the school district and other kinds of activities where the students who are learning broadcast technique and learning all of the equipment related to broadcast are doing this wonderful job of recording this information and material and putting it on KALB and making it available online as well. What we would like to do is also encourage students, and not just the ones that are in the broadcasting department, but other students, to make creative projects, whether it's documentary or narrative films, partly for the Film Festival, but in a larger sense to tell the story of Albany. And that's something that we have been, from the genesis of this committee, we've been committed to, trying to create more and more opportunities for the story of Albany to be told. Now, it's partly for people to speak their own story, but it's also for everybody else in the community to hear those stories and to recognize all the amazing things that are happening within our tiny city limits. I'm just going to move this, I'll move that down a little bit to the bottom of the first page. And I mentioned something about the equipment that was installed. Also, this mentions community partnerships with the Solano Avenue Association and the Albany Community Foundation, the staffing, that is Jeremy Allen. And then the other thing at the bottom of this first list is the website for Albany's general plan, Albany 2035. And it's a very nice website, I think. And there's a lovely video that was made by Jeremy and a number of other people, edited by Jules Kobelin, and it's a, it's a very nice piece. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, please do. In terms of the initiatives, starting at the bottom of this first page, it's our desire, of course, and our recommendation to continue the Albany Film Festival, and there are lots of great reasons for that. The only, the only real impediment is time, money, space, typical. But it's absolutely a valuable resource, not only for community members to see work that's being done elsewhere, to broaden the boundaries of our town, but for the people here to be seen elsewhere as well. So, we think that's a great thing. I'm going to just scroll down to the next page. I'm actually going to talk about this whole page at once because it all relates to the same stuff. What this is all about, TV production, Albany-related programming, workshops and training for people so they can make their own programs, the potential for providing city equipment for the making of programs. What this is all about is making more programs, not only to fill out the schedule of KALB, but really, as we've been talking about, people in the community to be able to talk to each other and to hear from each other. There's a certain forum that's available to people here, obviously, but it's very limited. And what we would like to make possible is more opportunity for people to make statements, whether it's about policy issues or a variety of other things that they may, may want to make statements about, or respond to statements that other people have made, and not just necessarily in a factual statement kind of way, but possibly in creative programs that people make, whether they're documentary or narrative. There are lots of ways to tell stories and lots of ways to get information across beyond just standing and making a speech. And we want to make those avenues available to people. And so, going to the next page. One of the ways of doing that is to expand the operations and the staffing of KALB. And so, that's another thing that's going to be something that's discussed a lot and probably a recommendation coming down sometime later this year. And how do, how does all of this relate to the City Council's strategic plan? Well, the main thing, as it says, is your commitment to engaging our diverse community. So, what is this diverse community? Where are they? And how many of them actually are engaged in city activities, city discussions? How many participate really in all of what, what activities there are already in Albany? It's not clear, but a lot of folks have been saying that as a bedroom community, many, many people who live here and work elsewhere don't do that much participation locally, don't even know that much about what's going on in Albany. Part of our job is to make clear to everybody what's available, but also to make available to people a forum for telling their story, and that's what we want to do. KALB is a great resource for, as it says, public governmental and educational information. It's now a normal part of our activity in, in KALB to have all of these meetings and school board meetings and the others that are broadcast. That's part of the record-keeping. You go online and you can find videos of council meetings from a year ago or two years ago. People can look at what has been talked about. They can research through this available information that's online, and it's a valuable resource as a result of that. It talks about the connections with business community as part of this diverse community that we're interested in. And then, this general statement that public access television is something that's a really powerful tool, as we've been saying, for people to make statements or creative projects that talk about and talk to the local community. I just want to share one other thing with you, and it's part of this history of Albany TV that's online, if this is a blow-up version of it. So, at the end of this little article that talks about the history of Albany TV, I'll just read you a couple sentences here. Despite this tremendous progress, much needs to be done. We still don't have the cable TV studio envisioned in the 1992 plan. As a consequence, we don't have nearly enough locally-produced content. The coverage of local Albany issues on the major media outlets is spotty at best. The potential for KALB to fill the void here is great, but it has yet to be realized. Dated 2008, we are still waiting to realize that which was first dreamed of in 1992, and then with the creation of this committee a few years ago, a concerted effort to try and make that happen. So, that's basically what our commitment for this year is, to carry on the work that has been done, but try and create more and more opportunities for local programming and local access.
Thank you. Comments and questions?
Yeah, it seems like a great way of morphing from the print, and you know, like all magazines, when I first got on, it was like, oh, let's have some kind of way. We're reaching out with this kind of a magazine, but this seems like, well, we've gone to a point, this is a much better way of reaching the public when, now that we have all the computer stuff. So, again, I think it's great that we can reach out because we need to. And anyway, you did a very nice presentation, and I'd like to thank you, and I don't know if everybody knows that Terry is a very successful actor and videographer, and it's a pleasure to have you on this committee. I wish I could point you. Anyway, thank you. It was a very informative presentation.
So, at the Film Festival, were there movies that were produced in Albany?
There were a few, not enough. And we say that only not to exclude the possibility of people elsewhere making films that get into our festival. We'd like a broader festival, but we feel like there's much more opportunity for students, that's my interest, but also the community generally, to tell stories. The obstacle for people in the past has been the appropriate equipment, as well as just the knowledge of how to do it. One of the things that we're trying to do is to make our equipment available, if we can, but it has to be done under appropriate circumstances. We've got a lot of equipment now. We want to figure out a way to make it available to people for telling stories, but even if they don't use the more sophisticated equipment that's available potentially to them through the city, we want to encourage people to take the tools that are in their hands. People are using cell phones now to make movies. Students are doing it all the time. They just are not doing it in a way that tells a story appropriate to something that would go into the Film Festival. So, that's part of what it is that we're going to try and encourage people to do so that we see more of ourselves on the Film Festival screen.
I just wanted to say that when these kids go to see commercial movies in the theaters, they never see much plot and story development either, so maybe you could work on that for them.
Well, the problem with that is there's a lot of splash and money that goes into the effects. That's not what we're interested in. We're interested in storytelling. And people can do that with a comic book. People can do that with a cellphone. There are lots of tools that people can use to make stories.
I just checked out The Bicycle Thief the other day.
Ah, yeah, great, great film.
Just one quick question. At the high school, so you work with Ned Purdom and the video guy's name is Jeff Castle?
Yeah. I did talk to them. Their interest is in broadcast, so they're teaching all of their students how to use broadcast equipment. And that's fine, but that's really only appropriate for those events that lend themselves to broadcast. So, we're trying to expand that. You know, there are 30 some odd students in the broadcast area. You know, there are thirty-some-odd students in the broadcast area, but there are hundreds of students outside of that at the school that are making films already, that are not interested necessarily in a broadcast career or a broadcast track. So our next step is to try to find all those other folks who are interested in storytelling in the variety of ways that they do it, who are not necessarily interested in broadcast.
One more quick question. Pacific Film Archive, do you have any interactions with PFA?
I have to say, I don't know. I'm relatively new to this committee, so I don't know what its past history beyond the last couple of months is. But I will find out and come back.
Just a thought.
Sure.
I went to the film festival for the first time this year and loved it. It was great. I can see where you can imagine it expanding because it was standing room only for the time I was there, and I stood for most of it that I was able to stand for. Yeah, I found myself looking at all the pros of all these different suggestions, and they all sound great. But in my notes, on almost every one of them, I said, what's this going to cost? And I love to hear it. I'd love to hear what the committee thinks some of their proposals will cost and how we might finance it. Certainly, I love this idea of getting involved with the business community. I know some film festivals I've heard of in small towns, they'll do screenings in restaurants, and then you work out a deal with the restaurant. I mean, there's lots of possibilities where this could be a public business, you know, collective thing. So lots of luck. It sounds like exciting times to be on the Community Media Committee.
It is. And as you say, there are lots of ways to expand that don't necessarily involve money, but many ways that do. And so part of what our challenge for this year is going to be is to figure out workable recommendations that we can make to you, that you could hopefully be able to deal with in some way. And, if I may, there are two seats on the committee that are currently vacant, that are from you folks. We need more hands and more brains to make all this work, so if you can get us two more bodies, you know, hot bodies, we will do what we can to keep this thing going and make it bigger.
I have a couple neighbors that might be interested, but this is going to help me because what I'm trying to figure out is how to send this to them, so they can see what they would be getting themselves into. But anyway.
This will be, I'm not sure exactly when, maybe you know, but I know that all of the City Council videos will be on the website in the near future. They're all there now, but I'm just saying this one will be there too at some point.
I'm going to get Jeremy to show me how to put this in an email.
Right, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Very thorough report. Appreciate that. Can we have the summary of the work plan for Parks and Recreation?
Aileen Pearson, the Park and Rec Chair.
Good evening, council members. I'm Aileen Pearson, Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. Thanks for letting me come talk about our annual plan. And before I go through the items that are on our report, I just wanted to say that when we looked, as a commission, when we looked at the work that we did last year and the work that we wanted to do, or we want to do this next year, we took a look at the council's strategic plan, and we saw that there was a great alignment with what your objectives are and with what we're doing. And so before I talk about the individual items, I wanted to say that, you know, your first objective of maximizing parks and open space is something I know I can speak on behalf of my fellow council, I mean, my fellow commissioners, that it's something that we're all really engaged in and excited about. And so that's something that we prioritize with the work that we're doing with staff and with the public. And then in terms of engaging a diverse community, the projects that we work on and the initiatives, they address the diverse community of Albany from the totlot, you know, from infants that use Dartmouth Totlot to the seniors at the Senior Center, but also a diversity of activities from, you know, the benches along the O'Leary Greenway to the ballfields out by the Gilman Track. So I'm certain that we're addressing, you know, that objective as well. And then fostering community climate action, all of the parks and open space facilities encourage people to get out in nature. You know, the community gardens have been, we've been very active on working with member friends of Albany Parks to expand the community gardens. And the tree planting, like making Albany more sustainable and green, just getting people outdoors and using greenways and just active lifestyles. So I'm certain that the work that we did last year and that we'll be doing this year is all very much in line with your strategic plan as well. So in terms of what we did last year, there were four projects that we worked on that were sort of highlights of the year, and one of them was providing input on the Pier Street Park planning. There were a couple, I think there was one charrette and maybe, or maybe two charrettes or workshop that some of the council members, the, I'm sorry, commissioners went to. And then we also reviewed the 35% plan that the consultant brought to us and then made some recommendations and submitted on to you. So that was something that we worked on last year. We'll continue to work on it this year in our meeting this past week. We went over the 65% plans, and so we'll be working with the consultant and staff on that for this next year as well. The other big thing that we worked on, another large project that we worked on this year, were the modifications to Section B and the recommendations on the ordinance changes, which we made recommendations to you guys, and there was a slight modification of those. And I think that both the neighbors and the dog park, well, it's not allowed to say dog park, and the multi-use park users were all happy with the adjustments that were made to that ordinance. We supported a number of street tree planting events, and then we've been working very closely with the Friends of Albany Parks on the Edible Landscape Project. And I know that we've made a couple of recommendations on expanding and supporting the work that's been done on that project over the last year and expect to continue next year. So the continuing projects, like I said, Pier Street Park, working with community groups, including, you know, Friends of Albany Parks. And then also, this year, we plan to continue with the implementation of the Albany Hill Creekside Master Plan, planning-type projects. We did a little bit of work last year on improvements or amenities to add to the O'Leary Greenway now that they did the, that the barn is finished with their seismic upgrade. And so that's something that we plan to, you know, we would like to put together some sort of plan for amenities. We've gotten members of the public to come to our meetings and talk about what they would want, and so we would like to do that this year, work on that project. And then we plan to review the Albany Tree Policy. It's something that we try to do on annual basis, but it's been a while since it's been done. So that's on our schedule. And then we'll continually evaluate the tree removal applications that the citizens bring to the commission. This year, we're going to visit, summarize, and evaluate the condition of the parks and open space and facilities that are, that the Recreation Department and the commission work together on. And so we're going to start that at this, in April, we're going to start at Memorial Park and get input from community members, and we're going to have a couple commissioner members, commissioners that are going to be responsible for each of the parks, and then come back to the commission and talk about what improvements could possibly be made, what people are happy with, what people, you know, would like to see. And so we're going to try to do one park or facility per meeting, and we're going to see how that goes. And then also review city recreational program, programming as needed. We've had, in the past couple of years, we've had, like, the Friendship Club come up once and the Senior Center come up once, and so we plan to keep up with any of those types of issues that come up. And that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I've always wondered, you're talking about the O'Leary Parkway, and there's also community gardens. Has there ever been any discussion about putting some community gardens in the O'Leary Parkway? Is that considered?
There's a lot of discussion about that, yeah. Yeah. So we hope to put together a plan, like a unified plan of the entire Greenway and identify some places where we can put community gardens. We're going to talk with Tony, and we're going to talk with some of these community groups to see what people want, talk with some neighbors to make sure that, you know, they're in agreement if we put a garden by someone's back fence, to make sure that they're happy with that. So yeah, that's definitely part of the plan.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah, I really like the way you're going to be evaluating the parks and bringing the commissioners in on that, and members of the public. It really sounds like an excellent plan. I think Shelley had something to do with that as well, right? And then on the Albany Tree Policy, one of my questions earlier was whether other cities have something called historic trees, or I forget what the term is. Oh, okay, thank you, legacy trees. Is that something we're considering?
You know, I don't know. I guess I will take note of it, and when we get to reviewing the tree policy, I'll get back to you. I'm not sure what the, you know, if we have, if legacy trees come into the policy right now.
I think Jeff has done a review of a lot of the policies in the Bay Area, so we probably have some, a legacy of documents to review.
I'm sure.
Wasn't there something made mention about it being in our general plan or 1992 to 2012 general plan? I know it came up a couple meetings ago, or a meeting or so ago.
I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank on whether it's in the existing general plan.
The existing general plan.
But we have done some work for the council last year, I believe it was, on researching tree protection ordinances that would apply to private property and some of the, what other communities are doing in that regard. And so we can, when you get to Planning and Zoning Commission here in a few moments, that could be something you may want to suggest that we take on.
Okay. Thank you. That was a really excellent review. All right, so we hear from Planning and Zoning.
Yes, Nick Pilch, Vice Chair.
Hi, Nick Pilch, Vice Chair of Planning and Zoning. Chair could not be here tonight. Doug Donaldson is the chair this year. I apologize, I didn't know if I was, that I was going to have to do such a, going to do a formal presentation. That said, I think I can speak to this maybe more, a little more briefly, and then take questions, and maybe lean on staff if I stumble. But the chair, before I started, the chair did want to, wanted me to speak to the fact that he thought we had a very good commission these, last year and this year, and he's been very happy with the work we've done, and he thought we've been able to move quite a few things along in really collegial manner. And we have, he is just also happy with the diversity of the commission, as I am too. I'm very happy to be working with this commission. I think we're, it's been, it's been very good to work with my fellow members. So in terms of 2013, just to briefly review our accomplishments, maybe I will not read them off. I think you know what many of them are, since many of them have come to you fairly recently for approval, and I would like to say thank you for upholding our decisions on the numerous appeals that I know you've had to hear recently, especially since some of these projects have been somewhat controversial. So thank you for that. I'm glad to see these projects moving forward. Not listed in 2013 are a couple of wireless applications that we did, were rather, either replacement projects or replacing old antennas with new antennas. One that I'm particularly proud of is the one at the building that houses the...
Sunnyside Cafe.
What's that?
Sunnyside Cafe.
Yes, thank you, that one. I was very happy they were able to introduce, that our comments produced a much better design, the final design of the turrets, which will house the antennas, so, or, I think it was actually, can't remember how it ended up, but it ended up very nice, looking very nice, so we're happy with that. So coming up in 2014, I'd love to see us, well, we'd love to see the Safeway remodel come back, another Safeway remodel come back to work on. As you know, we've recently closed out the last housing element, and thank you again for that, and we're looking forward to moving on, right, moving right on to the next housing element and all the general plan work, which is very interesting stuff to be able to work on. And Barry, it's Barry Miller, is our consultant, has been very good to work with, and we think he's done a very good job with all this work, so we're happy with that. As you, the commission, as I did mention, the commission's been very busy. On average, our meetings go to around 11:00 at night, sometimes end before that, sometimes after that, so we've got a lot of stuff to do. All the usual residential remodels come through, and we've got, a number of us are participating in the Measure D Working Group as well. We want to, we look forward to revisiting the wireless ordinance, and in particular, I think some of the applications that have come by recently will inform, might help inform possible changes that we want to make to that, or at least some tweaks. I mentioned the housing element in the general plan. The Public Works Center is coming up. Lot of meaty stuff coming up in front of the commission. I'd be happy to take any questions about that. And also, I'd say that one of the things that we were happy to do was to pass the, or to recommend the electronic billboard ordinance with the proviso that solar panels be provided to offset the carbon taken, the carbon used by the, the carbon released by the electronics. And with that, I think I'll end it and see if there's any questions.
I just want to second what you said about the process on Sunnyside Cafe with the AT&amp;T application. I thought that was a vast improvement, and that it went very quickly, and it was very cooperative. So that's a good model for how to move forward, I think.
Yeah, I think it was a good combination of both, you know, working with the applicant, but also pushing back in the right places so that they knew exactly what we expected of them in terms of a design. Yeah, I think, I was happy with that, too.
Marge, anything?
Well, just a couple of quick thoughts. 11 o'clock, that, we used to think that was the standard time you got off on planning and zoning, so if things really heat up, 11 o'clock will seem early, I'm sure of.
Okay, I know what to look forward to.
And our suggestion is one minute, speakers each get one minute.
Okay. You know, the notes I made on the iPad here, Safeway remodel, let's hope you get to hear something about a Safeway remodel, so, yeah, everyone should keep their fingers And I think, I think that's, you know, if you've got a full plate, good luck, and I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with, so.
Thank you.
Central work on that committee, so thanks, thanks to everyone, and thank you for filling in for Doug.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good at the City Public Forum announcements. For a person desiring to address the City Council on an item that's not on the agenda, please note that city policy limits each speaker up to three minutes. The mayor may reduce the time limits per speaker depending on the number of speakers. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take in or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comments or to a future agenda. All person wishing to speak on an item on the agenda or to fill out speaker card, they're in the back and provide them to me.
Members of the public, anyone who would like to speak? Back to the City Council. I'll just make one announcement. This coming Thursday, we're starting a program called Pause to Read at the Edith Stone Room at the Albany Library from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we have some certified dogs who'll be appearing. And Marla Stevenson, the superintendent of the schools, is bringing her two grandchildren, so certified dogs and certified children are invited to the event.
I made this announcement once before, but Wednesday night at the Ed Roberts Campus, Edward, Donald Shoup is speaking. He's the... He's the guru of parking reform, so if you're nerdy enough to like that kind of thing like me, you, you might want to go check it out.
Thank you for the recommendation. Anything, Penelope, from staff? Okay, next.
New business comprehensive annual financial report and annual audit for the year ended June 30, 2013, and supplemental report issued by the auditors. Staff recommendation that the council, one, receive presentation by the city's independent auditors of the results of their examination of the city's financial reports for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013, and two, accept the file, accept and file the reports.
I'm just going to start off this evening by introducing Ahmed Badawi of Badawi and Associates. He is your auditors, the external independent auditor. He's going to go through, over his presentation, which looks at sort of what the scope of their work was. I have a briefer highlight that focuses on some of the numbers and, and things that I think might be of interest, drilling down a little bit deeper on the reports, and certainly if there are questions, we would take them either at the end or as we go.
Okay, you want to give us your summary?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. Excuse me, I'm going to try to go back and forth and switch slides, so maybe I can move that a little bit to the side. Oh, that would be much better. All right, so today I'm going to give you a presentation. Basically, we wrapped up our 2013 audit, and I'm here to just communicate to you what was the scope of this audit, what did it cover, our responsibility as your independent auditors, the city management responsibility, what kind of opinion we issued, and also see if you have any questions for me. So I'm going to start off by basically, I mean, I just covered what we're going to be discussing today. So starting with the engagement team, this is basically the structure of the engagement team. I was the engagement partner, so I'm the one ultimately responsible for the audit and signing off on the audit opinion. We have also a quality control partner that usually is in the background. He's responsible for reviewing our work, making sure that we adhere to professional standards. And then the following individuals are basically the audit team, I mean, if you'd like me to go through their names, but that's basically the composition of the audit team for 2013. The deliverables and the scope of the audit, we were mainly engaged to report on the city's basic financial statements, which is the comprehensive annual financial report. Also this year, the city was recipient of federal grants, so the city was subject to the single audit, so we had to issue a report on the city's internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. In addition to that, we have also issued the report on the city's compliance with the federal grants themselves. In addition to that, we had also a compliance audit for the Measure B funds, compliance audit on the vehicle registration fee, compliance audit on the Transportation Development Act money, and then also, we were engaged to report on the, the city's pension plan, the pension fund. So that was also a separate audit that we performed. And I believe that we do calculation of your appropriation limit, your GAN limit, we do a review of this calculation, then finally, we are required to communicate with the governing body, so we issue a letter at the end of the audit communicating basically the same information that I'm going to be communicating today. So the areas that we emphasized on during our audit, there were really two main areas that we emphasized on, not necessarily that there was any indication for us that there was anything wrong in these areas, it's just, for example, revenues is an area that obviously is very significant in terms of dollars, and in addition to that, professional standards normally requires us that we consider it to be a high-risk area just due to the fact that management can override controls, can do some improper revenue recognition. Not that we found any of that, but that was the main reason why this area became an area of emphasis. So what we normally do is we try to confirm your major revenue sources, like property taxes, with the county, sales tax with the state, variety of other taxes that we send confirmations to, grant revenues also, we communicate with the grantors and get confirmations as to the amount paid to the city. On your proprietary funds, we did some analysis, ratio analysis of your receivables compared to the allowance, compared to the revenues. We also reviewed the allowance for uncollectible receivables, made sure that it was appropriate. The other area that we felt it was significant to us during our audit was capital assets, which covered city's infrastructure assets, machinery, equipment, vehicles, all of those assets. We normally are concerned that maybe some of the amount, or some of the expenditures that were capitalized as acquisition of capital assets should have been maintenance expense instead of actual asset acquisition, so we always look at all the acquisitions during the year and make sure that they were properly classified. We also look at any retirement that happened during the year of those assets and make sure that they were properly recorded as well. Our auditor's report, we have issued what we call an unmodified opinion. Basically, that's in plain terms means a clean opinion, and the audit opinion states that the audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards with the government auditing standards, and also with the OMB circular A133, which deals with the federal grants. What an unmodified audit opinion means, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that accounting principles have been consistently applied, that estimates are reasonable in the financial statements, and that all disclosures are properly reflected. Just wanted to highlight some of the financial information. I know Paul is going to probably go into, like he mentioned, more detail, but this is just a summary over the last three years of the composition of your assets. What are the city's biggest assets, and how do they look over the last three years? You can see that it's been consistent, and it's pretty much the same with most cities, that your cash and investments and your capital assets are your really largest assets by far. I mean, you have other things like restricted cash, receivables, but in the whole scheme of things, they're very insignificant compared to those two areas. Liabilities, again, your biggest liability is the long-term debt. The long-term debt normally consists of any loans payable, bonds payable, these types of long-term obligations. Again, it is your largest debt. Other than that, you just have the standard accounts payable and accrued payroll and other miscellaneous liabilities. Your net position, your net position is basically your equity, your assets minus your liabilities. And normally, the net position is broken down into various categories depending on the level of restrictions on those equity. So you will see that your largest category is what we call net investment in capital assets. This is really the portion of your equity that is not in expendable form. It is invested in the city's infrastructure, the city's capital assets, and there are some debt attached to it. So in order for that to be, to become available for spending, you have to first liquidate those assets, pay off the debt that was used to purchase those assets, and then whatever is left becomes available. So normally, obviously, this is not expected to happen, those funds or those equity are normally not available for spending. Other than that, you have a lot of restricted categories, and those are either restricted by grantor, for example, unspent bond, grant proceeds, or restricted by debt covenant, if you have any bond proceeds or restricted for capital projects, so there's a variety of restrictions on your, on your net assets. And then finally, the, the last column is your unrestricted category, and this is really the category that is under the city council's control, that there is no third-party legal restriction on those categories. So this is the money that is really available for spending. Some of it may have already been earmarked for spending, so we're just talking about whether there is a legal restriction on them or not. So that's basically the summary of those information over the last three years. And then finally, the changes in net position, which is really your net income for the year. Keep in mind, this is full accrual basis of accounting, so we're not just looking at the general fund or any, we're using, same like a private sector, so of course, when you start looking at each fund individually, it will look slightly different. But you can see here that the city had 4.8 million increase in net assets or net position over the last year. And that, basically, there was an increase, obviously, due to some increase in revenues. This year, there was some additional grant revenues that are one-time revenues, or some increase in, in tax revenues, so that's really, is reflected in those results. Net cost of service to tax revenue, this is a ratio that you always provide to all of our clients, and what we do is we take the cost of providing each individual service for this, in the city, like for example, public safety or public works, and we subtract from that any revenues those activities are able to generate on their own, in the forms of grants or fees charged to the public, or anything of that nature, and whatever is left is what we call the net cost of service. And we compare that to the tax revenue to see whether your tax revenues are sufficient to cover the net cost of service or not. So ideally, you want your tax revenues to be higher than the net cost of service. You can see over the last three years that your tax revenue has been consistently higher than the net cost of service, so that's obviously a good sign, means that basically, your tax revenue is covering your costs, and there's usually excess amounts in terms of investment earnings and things like that, that also goes into play. This is a focus on the general fund specifically. Of course, the general fund is the chief operating fund of the city, so its, its liquidity is very important. What we normally do is we take your unassigned fund balance, the fund balance that is not really assigned to any specific purpose, and we compare that to your annual expenditures. Idea is to see if all the revenue sources see, stop coming in, whether you can continue to pay your bills or not, and for how long. So we have determined that as of 2013, you probably can continue to pay your bills for about three months. The recommended Government Finance Officers Association ratio is anywhere from two to four months. So you're right in the middle in terms of that ratio. And I actually just wanted to also indicate that when we look, this fund balance is only the unassigned portion, so you also have additional assigned fund balance that are still under your control, but you have already assigned it to different purposes. So you can always change your mind and use that additional money as well. So actually, the, the ratio is probably a little bit higher than three months if you were to include those amounts. Some audit findings, so this year we had a few audit findings. So we had one finding on the financial statements, or the financial audit, basically, and it really had to do with the internal control over financial reporting and preparation of the financial statements. The audit seems to, seems to go well, and we're able to support different account balances, different, different accounts, but the city seems to struggle when it comes to basically putting that information into a financial statement format and basically getting it to us. So we have determined that this weakness is actually considered to be a material weakness, which is the most severe level of control deficiencies that we can provide. So obviously, we would like to see some action plan in the, in the future, some corrective action plan to address that issue. We also had a couple of compliance findings that we came up with. The first one was really regarding the single audit, which is the audit of the federal grants. Normally, there is a requirement for the city, if, if you're going to hire a contractor and you're going to pay that contractor from federal funds, you have to check to see whether this contractor was suspended or debarred from doing business with the federal government. The city is required to do this check before awarding the contract and document it. So in one instance, the, the city did not perform that check, so basically, it's a finding on the single audit. And we also provide a separate audit for the police and fire pension fund, and we do have an observation on that, that once, I believe it's presented to the board of the pension fund, it will also be presented to the city council. So that's basically all the findings that we have for the audit. And then finally, we are required to communicate to you certain information, so I'm going to go over those slides, and I'll, I'll go very briefly over them, and please interrupt me if you have any questions. Just wanted to communicate to the council our responsibilities under the generally accepted auditing standards, so this is our responsibility as your audit firm. We are responsible mainly for expressing an opinion on whether your financial statements are free of material statements or fairly stated. In doing so, we are responsible for evaluating the internal controls, and if we find any issues, like we, like we did, we will bring it to your attention. We're also responsible for evaluating compliance with contracts, regulations, laws, grants, and we basically have a couple of findings that relates to those. We're responsible for evaluating the tone at the top, basically, what kind of message management is sending to the rest of the organization, what kind of message city council is sending to the rest of the organization, does management act on audit findings and try to correct them? So a lot of these things goes into our risk assessment and audit planning. We are also responsible to ensure that your financial statements are clear and transparent, and then finally, we're responsible to communicate with the governing body. Management responsibility towards the audit process, when I say management, I'm really referring to city manager, finance director, not necessarily the city council. So management is responsible for the financial statements, so even though we audit those statements, it is still ultimately the responsibility of city management to ensure that they're accurate and complete. Management is responsible to establish and maintain internal, internal controls over financial reporting, making all financial records available to us during the audit, adjust the financial statements for any corrections or any errors that were detected, establish internal controls to prevent and detect fraud, and then comply, inform us of any known and suspected fraud, and then comply with all laws and regulations. So this is management responsibility. Independence, we are called the independent auditors, so we have to remain independent. This is solely our responsibility, so the city does not really have to do anything. We adhere to professional standards by the California Board of Accountancy, by the AICPA. We have internal procedures that we circulate questionnaires to all of our staff every year, making sure that they disclose to us all direct and indirect relationships with the city. We evaluate these responses and make sure that there is no independence issues. Also, anytime we provide additional services to the city, we evaluate those services, make sure that they don't impair our independence as your independent auditor. Timing of the audit, the audit was delayed due to the city not able to close and prepare the financial statements timely, so really, we, we just feel that this, those reasons can be easily avoided in the future, since the city seems to have good records, good controls over its assets. It's just a matter of wrapping up the year, reporting, those are the things that we really would like to see improvement in. Some of the significant accounting policies and unusual transactions, there was really no unusual transactions, but there were four new accounting standards that the city had to consider and determine whether they would be applicable or not, and those four standards are basically, we refer to them as statements, they are by the Government Accounting Standard Board, so there was statement 60, 61, 62, and 63 that were applicable to the city. We evaluated the impact and reflected that in the financial statements for, for this year. Management judgment and accounting estimates, some of the numbers in the financial statements are not actual numbers, they are based on estimates, and that is acceptable as long as there is a reasonable basis behind those estimates. So some of these numbers, for example, would be something like your investment valuations, your allowance for uncollectible receivables, for example, the useful life of capital assets, the pension obligation, the, any other post, the retiree medical benefits obligations, they're all based on actuarial studies, so these are all estimates, basically. So just wanted you to be aware of which accounts really involve a lot of estimation. Sensitive disclosure, I just tried to list for you some of the, what we think is the most sensitive disclosure in the financial statement. So those are some, some of the notes that we think are important, somebody has significant accounting policies, these are the notes that describe basically the different accounting policies the city has adopted. Cash and investment, talk about the credit risk and the interest rate risk on your investments, the custodial risk, what are the investment ratings, investment policy, whether you complied with the investment policy or not. For example, the retirement benefits, the retirement plans, talks about the actuarial studies, the different assumptions used in those actuarial studies. So there's a lot of valuable information in these notes. Difficulties encountered in, in performing our audit, we really encountered no difficulties beside the, the findings that we, that we reported, really, management was cooperative and did their best to provide us the information as best as they can. Significant audit adjustments and unadjusted differences considered by management, so there were adjustments and reclassifying entries during the course of the audit. Management has posted all of the adjustment entries except one. The reason was just so small and basically just felt it was really not worth recording. Potential effect on financial statements of any significant risks and exposure. Beside- Besides the normal standard delegations that we normally confirm with the city attorney and with outside attorneys, there was really nothing that came to our attention that will basically cause this risk onto the financial statements. Disagreement with management. We are pleased to report that we had no disagreement with management. Deficiencies in internal control, like I mentioned, we identified one material weakness in internal control, and we had no significant deficiencies in internal control. Representations requested from management. Anytime we issue a financial statements, we have to obtain what we call a management representation letter. This letter normally basically says that management has disclosed to us all known facts, that they have recorded all transactions, that they have titled to all the assets, that there is nothing that is pledged that we're not aware of, that they told us of all known and suspected fraud. So there's a really long list of items that management acknowledged before we release their opinion. Management consultation with other accounting firm or other accountants who are not aware that management has engaged any other accounting firm to consult on any accounting matter. Other written, material written communications beside our engagement letter and our representation letters, there was really no written communications with the city. Material uncertainties related to events and conditions, we're not aware of any material uncertainties. Fraud and illegal act, we have not become aware of any fraud or illegal act. Again, I always like to caution that our audit is not designed to mainly discover fraud, it is designed to determine whether your financial statements are fairly stated or not. So we do consider fraud, we consider it in our planning, but our main objective is not to detect fraud. So that's why we say that nothing come to our attention, but fraud may still exist and may have not come to our attention. And then finally, this is just a list of the new accounting standards. Like I mentioned, we considered four new accounting standards for the city in fiscal year 2013. Fiscal year 2014, even though there are four additional accounting standards, they are relatively easy and with no significant impact on the city. And then in fiscal year 2015, this is where the new pension standards will be effective, and this will have a significant impact on the city. Of course, all the unfunded liabilities that used to not be reported in the financial statements now is going to have to be on your balance sheet. So that's some really big numbers that's going to hit your balance sheet as liabilities, and that's going to change, obviously, how your net position look like. So that's really your biggest one coming towards you. With that, I really want to say thank you for the city and for management, it's been really a pleasure. I'm more than happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Is the material weakness that we were late reporting, or is that different than?
Well, the material weakness is not necessarily late as much as we feel that the process of putting the financial statements together and closing the books have a lot of weaknesses that causes that delay. That we, for example, get provided a draft of the financials that is, have some significant issues, and we feel that they should not have even come to us in that condition. So there are a lot of things like that, a lot of back and forth information that should have been in the financials that was not, and basically, a lot of review that goes into it.
So you're not the person to ask whether we're going to be doing better? We'll be doing better because we have to do better, right?
Well, I mean, definitely, this area, again, we always look at financial reporting, timely financial reporting is key. I think when you get financial information that are nine or 10 months old, I'm not quite sure how valuable that is. Keep in mind that even in the government industry, the standard of six months, which is what most government agencies are, they commit to the six months of December 31st deadline. When you compare that to publicly traded companies, that's really unheard of. Financial statements should really be within three months or so to be effective, so you can have timely information to make decisions. Of course, we cannot push the city to finish within three months, but definitely, we would like you to be within the standard six months that most cities are complying with.
We're planning to improve that. Other questions?
Just a quick one, following up on this. So we're nine months now from fiscal close, and you say most cities of our type, we'd be having this meeting in December or early January.
That is correct, yes.
Marc, did you have something?
Yeah, the 2015 GASB standards, is that an extension of the ones that they put in to effect several years ago, where we felt we didn't really have a problem? And now it's changing, obviously, it's changing. So is this an extension of what they had put in by the state several years ago?
Regarding pension?
Yeah, regarding the pension unfunded liabilities.
Well, basically, the standards that the city is currently using is, you know, you don't have any liability on your books for pension. There is an amount that is being provided by CalPERS every year that is called any required contribution. And as long as you're paying that amount, you are not required to record any liability. However, that doesn't mean that there are no unfunded liability. Just GASB used to allow you 30 years to amortize this unfunded liability, and now they said we cannot do that anymore. So whatever unfunded liability you have, you need to put it on your books. So that's a big change, and it didn't, this is actually almost a revamp of how pension accounting is done in government.
A lot of cities got stuck for millions and millions of dollars, and we weren't in quite that position, but I could see us getting bad if we're not careful.
Oh, and obviously, and even looking at the numbers that you currently have, those will be even more than that, because currently, we take what we call the actuarial value of assets that CalPERS provide. And the new GASB standard is going to require the city to use the fair market value of assets. There is such a big difference that I can tell you, for example, you know, that I audit the city of Berkeley, and just taking the difference between the actuarial value of assets and the fair value of assets is something anywhere from 150 to 200 million dollars in difference. So of course, that's not going to be as much for the city of Albany, but, you know, it will cause another big difference, that additional liability that will go on your books. So.
Okay. Pete?
Well, Michael sort of asked what I wondered. I mean, how do we compare to other cities our size, not Berkeley necessarily, that's six times larger, but beyond this, that we don't seem to get our reporting in particularly.
Well, I mean, of course, I was just using Berkeley, it was just the most recent number I had in mind, so I just figured I'd use it also to make a point, because it is a large number, so I wanted to make it clear to the council that, you know, it is significant, even that that small change would make a big difference. I think that the city of Albany compared to other cities, like I mentioned before, I don't think that we had any issues or identified any issues in terms of basically protecting the city's assets, that city assets are protected, we feel that there are good controls there. Again, the timely financial reporting, you know, there are some cities that struggle with that, but I would say that the majority of our clients do finish by December 31st. Albany used to be one of the first ones that used to finish, and we would like to see them coming back to where they were before.
We do too.
Yeah, so we experience on both sides, and so we know it's definitely possible, and we look forward to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Thank you. So, Mayor and members of the city council, Ahmed sort of spoke on the scope of their work and some of the checkmarks that they've been through. And what I had hoped to do tonight is just peel back a couple of the numbers in the report and also just bring to your attention some policy things that you should probably be aware of. So the net position of the city increased by 7.6%, 3.9 million. As we, as Ahmed mentioned, part of what you have in terms of net assets, though, just remember, keep in mind, it's streets and parks and things that you aren't going to spend on a program, because they're already doing important things out there, but we still place a value, and it's a good thing to keep track of where your assets are in terms of their useful lives. The other thing I'd note is that unrestricted assets decreased by 1.7 million, and restricted assets increased by three and a half million. That's in terms of all funds presented. Also wanted to touch for a moment on the enterprise fund, which is basically your sewer collection fund where charges are made to users, and those funds are used to both maintain the system as well as make capital improvements. Again, current assets maintained pretty well stable. You added 800,000, that's new projects, new assets that are being added. Your liabilities decreased, which is normal in any fund where you have debt and you aren't adding to the debt, you're actually paying it off. And one item I wanted to note, because it was presented a little differently in the past, is we have increased the restricted fund balance to 1.5 million dollars in the sewer enterprise fund. And that figure was calculated and discussed when the current sewer rate study was done, and the consultant recommended that as a minimum emergency capital, what if something happened and you had to get out there? So we've set that aside as a restricted amount. In terms of policy, the timing, I just bring to your attention, and I know Ray and the city manager have been discussing, this upcoming year will be the last year of the automatic CPI adjustment, so it's likely that your public works director will be in the next year bringing to you another rate study which would coincide with the sewer master plan, looking at what improvements are needed, and looking at what happens to rates from 2015, 16, and beyond, and where you're at. I think the good thing that I would note is, other than the debt that you had on the books, is what you are collecting, you're able to address a lot of your capital needs in that system, and that's a positive thing. There's cash balance there to keep those improvements that the public works director has presented going. Changes this year in terms of major funds. So in the 2012 report, there were only three funds that were reported as major funds. In the current report, we have five. We kind of tried to show in terms of total revenue and total expenditures there what those funds represented. Obviously, we're capturing a much larger percentage of the total revenues and expenditures in those five major funds. I would say that that and some of the adjustments to the financial statements did take some time, no doubt, because working from the Excel workbooks, some things had to be reworked in order to make it work with all of the required funds that we're required to report on. The two new funds that were added this year is the pension tax, property tax fund, and the congestion mitigation air quality grant, that was the Buchanan Avenue Improvement In terms of when you look at those five major funds, again, the purpose of this slide is just to give you a sense of the relative size of the general fund. So you take those five major funds, and you can see the big blue piece of the pie, that's your general fund. So really, that is where the majority of the activity takes place, not that the other funds aren't important and you don't need to understand how they interact, but just, I think that's why we tend to spend a lot of time talking about what is happening in the general fund. We provided within the CAFR a detailed disclosure of what funds, so with fund accounting, there are times when you may transfer funds from one fund to another. That happened with about 3 million dollars worth of funds. We've detailed that in the footnotes to the CAFR. An example is the emergency medical services operation where it's actually budgeted, expended in the general fund, but those special revenue funds are then transferred into the general fund rather than doing the expenditures in the special revenue fund. The third bullet on this slide, again, getting back to sort of policy things, and I'm using my role as your financial consultant at this time in life, just to comment on, relative to the amounts of capital assets you have, especially if you look at public safety rolling stock, if you look at your parks, playground improvements, not a whole lot's being put away for the next time, you have to replace those. You know, there was a transfer from the general fund into some fire and police equipment reserve funds of about 97,000. If you have to buy a new fire engine, and if the fire chief was here, I'll probably quote the wrong number, but if you had to write the check for 500,000 or more, or the ladder truck whenever that comes due. So that's just an area that probably, as good fiscal stewards, and as additional funds become available, it might be appropriate to look at what are we going to need to replace in the upcoming years, and do we have a plan to have the money there? Another change in this year's CAFR is the disclosure of other pension, other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, which relates to the retiree medical benefits. In the past, although it was stated that there wasn't a liability, that was never calculated, so we have, we did, GASB allows you to approach it two ways. If you're a big city, you're forced into getting an actuarial study, which can cost more than the alternative method. We use the alternative method because, A, we could get it done, and the size of the two groups, the city plan and the JPA plan, met the criteria for using the alternative method. So the total liability of those plans is 1.4 million dollars. The calculated contribution, so they go through a calculation and say, if you were to put away money, kind of like I was talking about for your replacement fire engine, but doing this for retiree medical, what should we be putting away? And again, there's assumptions that go into that, what's the money going to earn? It would have been about 151,000. What the city actu-
That was for fiscal 2013?
For fiscal 2013. What was actually contributed was less than 25,000. And that, basically, what that number is, is that's the actual check you're writing for retiree medical premiums for people who've already retired. So again, this is sort of a policy question, it's something that, again, is going forward in the future, the city's going to want to look at. There isn't a legal requirement that's yet that says you must fund the liability, but you do need to disclose what the liability is. And because this is the first year, it's not a big number, and actually, compared to most cities that, their firm audits, it's a smaller number than many of them are looking at, because the city has structured its retiree medical to only the minimum amount per month of approximately 115 dollars a month. But as you can see, even for a small group, if you don't start funding that, it adds up over time. So the city will want to sort of look, again, going forward in the future at budgeting, do they continue with what's referred to as pay-as-you-go and just dealing with that? Does the city look at actually funding that liability to actually get to the point where you're allowed to show any assets, though you can't just put them in a fund and hold them and say, well, we're earmarking these funds for that purpose? The accounting rules would require that you actually transfer those funds to an irrevocable trust. So there, I mean, there's nothing wrong with putting it aside, but you don't get the, you aren't able to deduct it from your liabilities unless it's in- you aren't able to deduct it from your liabilities unless it's in a trust. The general fund, fund balance went down slightly, again, not alarming, the city, I think, is sound, but again, as you budget and plan for what activities you're going to fund, it becomes a, an important indicator, especially as you gain history. Let me just comment on a couple things here. We did add a new designation or assignment to the affordable housing program that did not exist before, and there's 134,000. So again, legally, there was no obligation for that to be shown as an assignment. The city manager could have just added that to the unassigned balance, it is general fund money, there isn't a legal requirement. However, the source of those funds was the city's share of the former redevelopment low and moderate income housing funds that came back to the city general fund. We felt it was more appropriate to designate it and say that it will be, or assign it, say that it will be used for affordable housing in the future. How that gets used will be presented at another time in terms of, you know, is it programs that we're already contemplating, is it programs that we've funded in the current year that are basically addressing those things as well, so. To speak a little bit to some of the questions about timing, yes, December 31st is typically a requirement. Certainly, the current situation was impacted by turnover, it was impacted by concurrent audits by two outside agencies, and in discussions with the city manager and the auditor and myself, I think, and hearing from the city council, I think the direction is clear that it is a priority for the new director. Again, I, just, timing-wise, I'd remind you, the 2012 audit, I think, went to the council in July, so I was getting here and not everything had even been closed from that one before we got this one underway, so we, we, we did try, I want you to know that, I want you to know the finance staff did try to get it to you earlier, and this was the best we could do. There was a TDA audit as well, that had a finding regarding compliance. The past practice has been to allocate staff time under some grant programs, and in order to do that, one needs to actually either have a time management study that justifies that, or detailed time cards showing time on the grant and time not on the grant. That wasn't a record that was kept. Transportation Development Act. It was about an 11,000 grant, and the amount of staff time was, I want to say in the neighborhood of 5,000 or 7,000. It wasn't, so again, I've sort of shared with the city manager, you know, trying to be strategic when, when receiving grant funds and looking at, maybe, maybe they're best used for things in the ground and direct contracts, because there isn't a lot of depth in terms of financial staff to monitor it, or the project managers to keep track of I think Ahmed also had touched on this, certainly the production of a CAFER goes above and beyond sort of what minimally would need to be required, and for me, it, you know, wouldn't have happened without cooperation. We, we rely on staff in a lot of different departments to give us answers so that we can get back to the auditors, and me being new, I learned a lot and was glad that people cooperated, including Ahmed and his team. So with that, I will take any questions from the city manager.
Marc, do you want to start?
Well, I just wanted to say that I, that I don't think we're complaining about your timing, it's, it's more realizing that with the changes and things that were going on, that it's a, you lead up to something that happens like this, so we're very happy that you've been here, it's been a real help. And I know, going through this, it just seems like there's a lot of things that you have brought forward for us to think about, that New Eyes is, is very helpful for the city, and I know, I certainly appreciate the things that you have found that we can do better, even though we're doing a lot of things right, with New Eyes, we see things that, that need to be either updated or, or looked at, maybe in a new way. So, anyway, I appreciate all the things that you have brought forward for us, and thank you for your service.
Michael?
We had some hopes for two new revenue sources that they would come through. One was our Measure F increment to sales tax, and the other was, I know, can't really speak for the mayor, but she has expressed to me that she's hopeful that the property transfer tax numbers would look good because the housing market picked up. Do we have any sense about that?
If we're speaking of this report and last year, so fiscal year 13, so on the sales tax item, that was only in place from April through June, so by the time it triggered, I want to say the number was around 240,000. I want to say if you took it, you know, a quarter of what, that it, it performed a little better than the budget, and that same with, you know, just taking what was projected and dividing it by four, because you're going to, you're, you're going to realize a much different amount of that extra sales tax in the, or a much smaller amount, April to June, than you would maybe the Christmas quarter, as I call it. So, that was positive. On property transfer tax, I don't recall exactly where it landed compared to the budget. I do know that the current year, I want to say it was over the budget, and, and we're continuing to see increases in that as well. And of course, with both sales tax and property transfer tax, both of those are hooked on the economy, so we ride the good times, but we need to be cognizant that things outside of our control can change that very rapidly, as we've experienced in the recent past. And we can get you more specifics on how-
Just a quick one on our sanitary sewer situation, are there any potential landmines out there that we're not, of course, God forbid I quote, "He who not can be named," about, that's Cheney, about unknown unknowns, but are there any known unknowns, or any risks out there that we're not facing?
I think the work that's going underway now will sort of identify where the system's at, and you kind of have to do it incrementally with, right now, doing the sewer master plan. From that, we'll come up with a bunch of projects, and then you'll engage somebody on the financial side to look at, what do we have resource-wise, and what does it mean to the rates? In general, though, I, I think there's adequate funds to keep Ray's appetite going currently, and he isn't, he, he hasn't really had to make major scalebacks to accomplish where he's, where he's headed with the sewer program, at least for the next couple years.
Okay, Pete?
I'm, I'm not sure I can add very much. I am curious about these, these unfunded liabilities, which will go on the books in 2015, what, what are some of the consequences of that? I mean, I know it, we will feel less wealthy, or in, in some way, but will, will there be consequences for any bond measures we're liable to try to pass, or are, are rating in the market?
I would say the, the good thing is, it applies to everybody, so it isn't like Albany is going to be unique.
You're right.
I would say Albany has implemented some pension benefit changes earlier than some of the other cities. I mean, you adopted a tier that was, you know, ahead of when many agencies now are, are sort of required to adopt the new tier that's even above that one. I think, again, and it's difficult to say, so, City of Albany as a small city is in a pool, so PERS hasn't been reporting, here is your unfunded liability.
Individual.
They report it for the pool. With the, the changes in, in accounting standards, PERS is going to need to go back and say, okay, here's your share, and they're right now coming up with how they're going to do that in time for everyone to have their number. So, for small cities, I'll just say it, it's difficult, because there are people sometimes who approach you and say, well, Berkeley knows their unfunded liability is X with PERS, what is yours? And truthfully, we, PERS hasn't sliced it down to say which piece is ours, because we're just part of a larger pool. So in terms of what it's going to mean, again, your net assets, if you're going to have a way bigger liability, you may not have net assets. It's going to look different. The purpose is, presumably, to be more transparent about the fact that there are liabilities that ultimately are going to need to be paid. Now whether this is the right way of presenting them, you could probably argue forever, but I don't think, you know.
It, it, I mean, having thought about this a great deal, but it also seems like it, it might have some consequence on future negotiations between the groups who are getting these pension funding, and perhaps that was the intention of the legislature when they-
Well, and it, it was more, again, just from the accounting side of, this is a liability, should it move up? And should you be able to compare all the agencies?
Yeah.
Rather than, with retiree medical, the reason it's more difficult there is, the plan design is, you have hundreds of different kinds of benefits being offered, so you can't really get a comparable, what is everyone offering?
Right.
With pension, it's a little easier to, because there are only relatively small number of formulas out there.
Okay, well, thank you.
One more quick question. You know, I just want to compare us, as much as we can, to the situation with social security, which is going into debt further because of the baby, a lot of baby boomers are retiring, and I assume that on some smaller scale, that's the case here, because it will come some point in the future, when our pension burden is going to lighten up as all these baby boomers probably pass, you know, get over, our baby boomer retirees hit 65 and they're fully covered by Medicare, then are we going to see a sort of a tapering off of this problem?
So on the Medicare, if, if you're speaking of the retiree medical benefit, again, since you're only paying the minimum, that would continue, because they purchase the supplemental plan, the supplement Medicare plan. So, if you're talking about in terms of pension obligations, those, again, you're going to see the impact of the pension reform, new tier, but you have to wait till you have more people in there. One of the issues with that one that's going to come up earlier than later for PERS, and they're beginning to look at how they do it, is in the, what they call a classic plan, so the plans that people who worked for a PERS agency before 2013 are in, the, the number of people in the pool is getting smaller. So you can imagine, one day you'd have one person, and what would the percentage contribution have to be to, so they're going to be revising and perhaps changing that to, here is your bill in dollars, not necessarily expressed as a percentage of, of salary, because it doesn't work mathematically to do it the other way. So I, I think, again, and the other comment on pensions, is you're going to see increases over the next five years, regardless. PERS has just implemented, adopted a policy that will start to increase them, and one of the things, as, as you commented, you know, and then the people reach 65, is they're finding, but then they're living longer, and that is actually impacting the contribution rates over the next cycle. Most predominant, when you look at public safety, where you have a lower retirement age anyway, so those costs are something that the city is going to be facing over the next five to seven years, that we know, or we're, we're getting more information and learning more about today, that, you know, they'll, they'll be significant.
Members of the public, any questions or comments?
Carol O'Keefe, Albany resident, I'm really glad to hear the council talking about prospective issues, rather than, you know, just what is on your agenda right now for this presentation to accept and file the reports, in a sense, you know, that's pretty cut and dried, and I, I do want to thank the representative of the accounting firm and Mr. Rankin for their detailed information that I think helps frame the future questions that are the basis of my comments. As I'm inferring from your comments, I'm concerned about what a lot of this means, given the city's current situation, and some of it is prospective charges that you know more about than most anybody else, about legal bills, about the state's interest in money that we have already spent, whatever else is out there that could be large money that is in addition to the accounting rule changes that Mr. Badawi identified. So that's one thing. A second thing is, there isn't a whole lot more time before you all have to consider a budget for the next couple, well, at least for sure the next year, and presumably you'll do a two-year budget. So, I, you know, I don't have a suggestion, I, I just think it's a big concern to try and sort through everything that might happen and everything that you know is happening, and try and take that into account when you consider what the budget and the plan should be for really the fairly near future. I don't know if the answer is to invest in somebody on more of an accounting and/or actuarial consultant basis. I don't know if part of the issue is to examine whether there should be more staff to handle some of this stuff, and I hate to add more things to think about, but, but better now than even later. So I hope things like this will be rolled into the upcoming budget report, maybe there's already plans to do that. But I, I did want to raise those concerns about the other kind of lurking expenses in addition to the GASP changes, and, oh, and a new finance director too, all kinds of things. Well, I imagine we'll all be talking about this many more times.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you both for such thorough reports. Back to the council for a motion.
I move adjourn.
No, we need to receive the presentation and, and accept and file the reports.
I'll second it.
I'll, I'll move that we receive the presentation and reports are filed.
Second thought.
All right.
Councilmember Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wile?
Yes. So it's accepted unanimously. Next item.
Other business reports on meetings attended, announcement of events, and future agenda items.
So I attended the Sacramento rally, anti-fracking rally, and it was attended by about 4,500 people, and I saw quite a few Albany people there. And I also would like to congratulate the Albany High School girls wrestling team who came in as the, actually, first Albany team to win a major championship in terms of their level, which I forgot what it is, but I think is a state championship. And I really would like to invite them to come to the council and receive a recognition. So we'll figure that one out. And I think that's it for me.
Anyone else?
I attended a waste management meeting at the Zero Net Energy Center in San Leandro. It was an awards meeting for businesses who have done an exceptional job at recycling or, you know, things like that. The meeting was fine. It was at eight in the morning. The, the most interesting thing was the, the Net Energy Center was actually, I found, quite intriguing. They, it's set up as a training place for future electricians on the latest in electronic control and alternative energy things. They had three great little windmills outright in front, these little egg beater-style windmills. And I thought, wouldn't those look really cool on our, our new maintenance yard? Along with these potential solar panels, so, anyway.
We're just going to take a moment before we adjourn to acknowledge our former mayor, Richard Clark. There was a mass for him on March 10th. So we could just take a moment before we adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.